Good evening, the time is six o'clock. We'll get started with the meeting. Dr. Shepherd with public justice given in accordance with Division of Section 551-002.
Yes.
Will you have the minute show that all the trustees are present?
Yes, sir.
After we end session, how would you lead us in a word prayer?
Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight and to just do the work of the district. We thank you for all the men and women that commit their lives to serving our children. We thank you for our children, just that they are able to attend school safely, to learn, to grow, and to develop into great citizens of our community. We ask as we go over the agenda items tonight that we would have clear minds, that you'll give us the wisdom and decision making to approve the things that we need to move forward in this district. We love you and it's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Please join us for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. You ready? Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, President Wharton, and trustees. We are excited to share a few recognitions with you this evening. To continue exercising extra safety under our current situation, for recognitions when I get to you, I'll ask you to just stand where you are and I will share a little bit about you and spotlight you from here. It'll be a little weird, but just go with it and I think we'll get through it together. Our first recognition tonight is for Educator of the Month for October. Ryan Cobbauer, would you please stand where you are? Ms. Bauer is a criminal justice teacher at Huntsville High School in our Career and Technical Education Program. She initially joined the Hornet family back in January 2016 as a part-time teacher and then in August 2020 moved to become a full-time teacher, and what a blessing that has been. She is such an asset to Huntsville High School. She's a true team player who works extremely hard. She's always willing to help out wherever help is needed, not just in the CTE department, but anywhere on campus where there is a need. And she's always doing so with a smile on her face. In fact, seldom will you ever find her without that sweet smile, see? I'm telling you. She has a passion for criminal justice, but more importantly, she has a true passion for our students at Huntsville High School. She and Ms. Jordan Hubner, also a criminal justice teacher, have worked together to accomplish some really great things that are helping to build the criminal justice program and creating a spark that is helping to draw more students to be interested in the field of study. Ms. Bauer goes above and beyond for her students and Huntsville High School as a whole. There's not a day that goes by that she isn't up moving and doing something for her students. She always has their best interests at heart and truly wants them to succeed in class and in life. She serves as the club advisor for both the Criminal Justice Club and the National Technical Honor Society. She has also helped to organize the Career and Technical Education Teachers to start Skills USA programs to help showcase our students and their talents in competition settings. She's been volunteering in other areas to help support her students and fellow teachers. Her principal, Mr. Trevino, feels honored to serve alongside her each day, as well as her colleagues, and they feel that she's an absolutely amazing instructor and couldn't think of anyone more deserving of this recognition. We could not agree more. Your passion for service, law enforcement, criminal justice, and corrections is wrapped up in one big beautiful package with a hornet bow on top. We can't thank you enough for sharing all of your knowledge and expertise with our students, both past and present. Your commitment to educating and exposing students to the numerous avenues within the criminal justice system, helping connect them to law enforcement agencies locally and abroad, and providing them with real-world experiences has had such a positive impact and encouraged so many to go on to pursue degrees and careers in the criminal justice field. You are greatly appreciated and we are honored to recognize you tonight as Huntsville ISD's Educator of the Month for October. Tonight she just eked in here because the Criminal Justice Department was having a what? Citizens Police Academy graduation from a seven-week training that they've been conducting with past and present criminal justice students, learning all about criminal justice in our community. And that finished up tonight and she just got in here right in time. So, we just want to thank you again and congratulate you and give you an opportunity to share who's with you tonight. Would you like to introduce who's here?
Yes, from the end of the aisle, that's my older sister, Rainey Strick. That's my father, Rob Cobb. My father-in-law, Edward Bauer. My mother-in-law, Debbie Bauer.
Thank y'all for sharing her with us. She does an amazing job.
And I do have a little something. I'm gonna work it to you.
Our next recognition is our Employee of the Month for October. Ms. Etzel Lara Munoz, would you stand where you are? Backseat. Ms. Munoz joined the Huntsville ISD family this school year, serving as the receptionist for Huntsville High School. The school receptionist, if you aren't aware, is one of the hardest positions in a school district, and Ms. Munoz has been a pleasant and exciting addition to the front office staff at Huntsville High. She truly is the epitome of our motto, "Building Champions, every one, every day." She provides exceptional customer service to all: all students, all employees, all parents, all volunteers, our mentors, and community members. In all situations, she takes the best of care of everyone who visits the front kiosk at Huntsville High School. She has an upbeat personality and positive attitude that can't help but rub off on those around her. She handles stressful and often difficult situations with great poise and grace. She doesn't let things ruffle her feathers or distract her from her purpose. And though she has only been with us for a very short time, you cannot tell it, she acts like she's been here forever. In fact, I witnessed it firsthand with Mr. Roberts when we went over to visit her and surprise her with the news that she'd been selected for this recognition and invited her to our meeting. She wasn't the least bit distracted by our presence and continued with her duties first. It didn't matter who we were or what we were waiting for. She never skipped a beat. She juggled answering multiple phone calls and receiving visitor after visitor while we waited and never hesitated to serve each and every one of them while we patiently waited. She was in command of her area and did an outstanding job. She really could be the poster child for our Big Three with quality customer service at the very top. This is exactly what she does each and every day, not just while we were in your presence. She's also willing to lend a helping hand wherever there is a need and happily assists with the other front office staff who needs help. Ms. Munoz has taken on a few students to mentor this year and encourages them to do well in their work and to get to class whenever she sees them throughout their day. She has a heart for young people, but best of all, she has a heart for our students and Huntsville High School. You're a wonderful new member of the Hornet family and we thank you for the amazing job you do each day. Congratulations on being named our Huntsville ISD Employee of the Month for October. Congratulations again to both of our staff members tonight. We have one student recognition that we'd like to share with you. An outstanding Huntsville High School Senior Scholar. Would you please stand, Aiden? Principal Paul Trevino was notified that Aiden Hill has been named a commended student in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. A letter of commendation was presented to Aiden by Mr. Trevino earlier this month, and we couldn't wait to invite him to tonight's meeting so that the board could recognize his success. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. National Merit Scholarship commended students placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2020 competition by taking the 2020 Preliminary SAT and National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success according to a National Merit Scholarship Program spokesperson. These students present a valuable national resource, recognizing their accomplishments as well as the key role their schools play in their academic development. It is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. Aiden, the administration of Huntsville High School, Huntsville ISD, and our Board of Trustees are honored to recognize your commended status and congratulate you on your exemplary performance and academic success. We wish you all the best as you prepare for your future following Huntsville High School graduation. You make us Hornet proud. Congratulations again. Would you like to introduce your family with you tonight?
Sure. We have my dad, his name's Joe. He's a college professor. And then we have my mom, she teaches at high school. Her name's Kristin.
Science chair, correct? Thank you all for joining us and letting us celebrate him. We're super proud of him. It's not every high school in America that gets to say they have a National Merit Scholar and we do, so congratulations again. And that concludes our recognitions.
Congratulations from the board to the three of you for representing our community in such a positive manner. So, it takes a lot of hard work, not just as the employee, but as the student and for his family as well. So, I have a thank you letter I need to read to pay the proper respect for a group that did quite a bit for the HISD. So, this is a thank you letter that Ms. Duncan wrote in response to the Tall Pines Quilt Guild for some masks that they made for our faculty. So, Huntsville ISD would like to extend our serious appreciation to you for your kind offer to make face masks for our staff members in an effort to help encourage the use of masks. Your generous donation valued at $800 for 200 handmade cloth-based masks crafted by you and the other members of the Tall Pines Quilt Guild is greatly appreciated. We were able to provide a portion of the donated masks to each campus to have on hand for the employees in need. Thank you so much for thinking of us. We know that each mask was especially made with love and care for our Hornets. Thank you again. The next item is public comments that we have.
We do not.
The next item on the agenda is, the first item required board action is the consent agenda.
I move it, Phil.
Motion is second. Do we have any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please raise your red hand. Seven, zero, motion passed. I was gonna say, sorry, I forgot to say they could leave.
I'd already told them.
I'm sure y'all wanted to stay for all of this. The next item is considered board approval to appoint a representative and an alternate for the Houston Galveston Area Council. Dr. Shepherd, would you hear this?
You guys are well aware of the importance of this group and we've got an opportunity to have a representative on that council, so I'll turn it over to you to entertain the nominee.
I'll make a motion. Let me get Mr. Seabird's name out.
I have a motion to leave. Someone's in the current spot as our representative. Do I have a second? I have several seconds.
I'm gonna skip. Ken Holland.
Okay. All favor, raise your red hand. That's six-four, Ms. Owens abstained. I'm sorry, do we have any against? That's six-four, she abstained.
She abstained, of course she did.
Thank you for being on that. The next item is considered board approval of the design and development package.
No, excuse me, Mr. Holland. I'm Mr. Wharton, we have to have.
She's not gonna be sick, it's fine.
We have to have an alternate as well.
Can you volunteer?
Ken, have you been doing that?
Yes, sir.
What about Kathy? Kathy's still new? But you're just an alternate, so we're speaking happy.
So, I move to approve Kathy Schweitzer as the alternate with representation on our Houston Galveston Area Council.
Second.
It's happened to all of us.
All in favor? Six-four, are you abstaining or voting against yourself? Six-four, one extension. Motion passes. She will, Schweitzer will be our alternate. She's making sure that Ms. Owens has her flu shots up today. Okay, can I move on?
No.
Okay then. All right, the next item is considered board approval of the design and development package for the stadium renovations and baseball and softball.
I'll turn it directly over to our PBK team.
So, good evening. I'm Ron Bailey, partner with PBK Architects. First, just kind of want to introduce, we have two groups here out of our office that make up the leadership of the PBK team for Huntsville ISD. Juan Lopez and Andre Peay over there in PBK Sports, and then Sophia Dusek and Jonathan Per tweet for the rest of the projects. So, all of us together make up the, like I say, our PBK team. For the past several months, we've been working on the designs, continuing to develop the designs, and we're here to show you actually a total of four different buildings that are going to have improvements made to it. The first one is, of course, the stadium renovations and support facilities and the baseball and softball fields. You saw that once before, which was schematic design presentation, and Juan is going to take you through this one. And then after this, we have a presentation where we're going to be showing you the proposed classroom additions onto Stewart Elementary, Huntsville Elementary School, and Samuel Walker Houston Elementary Schools. And Sophia and Jonathan will be doing that one. So, Juan, why don't you take us through?
Okay. Hey, good evening. Thank you all for letting us be here tonight. Tonight we'll be showing the design development presentation, and we'll get started with the, first of all, thank you for the opportunity and thanks for everybody who's been a part of this as well as helping us develop the overall design. And again, the office appreciates the opportunity to be in here in the district. First of all, overall, existing master plan, we have a number of, I guess you can say, challenges and things that we've been working through, and we've gotten a lot of existing information since the last time we were presenting here. And so, all our engineers are going through it and developing and actually collaborating with the city of Huntsville, and that's been, just to let you know, that's been a great, they've been working with us quite well, so I just want to let you know that everything's been moving forward and everybody's working together well as we develop and continue developing the project. Overall, we're looking towards developing baseball and softball off of MLK and then developing the stadium and other existing conditions on their own campus. So, just the overall master plan, at the center, we have the stadium that we'll be looking to home and visitor seating and support facilities, a field house on the north side, adding some more parking on the north, and then also having the baseball and softball here to the west of MLK. To the right, we'll have the tennis courts far east campus, and we're also going to have a practice and throwing events at the center, and then some more jumping events here, and then looking towards another practice field to the northeast of the stadium. And we'll dig into it a little bit more as we move on through the presentation. So, first of all, we're looking at eight tennis courts, 25 parking spaces on the east side, and having some seating on the east and west side of the courts. And now, we'll have, go to the baseball and softball. So, baseball and softball, we've been working with the existing information, setbacks, right-of-ways, course of floodplains, and we've been tweaking all this, the adjustments, and so we're, we feel pretty comfortable where the fields are lying now. We have the parking up to the north. We have walks that will be coming up to the center of the facility. We'll have tickets here. We'll have gates for spectators to come in to this large plaza. What we do now have is we consolidated concessions and restrooms with the field house. The last time we showed it to you, there was two different buildings and we merged them together. This allows us to give emergency vehicles to come in when needed, if needed, and then also have a large plaza and then being easy access to the softball and to the baseball. The stadium, I'm sorry, the field house, and then behind that, we have batting cages as well. So, each field here, we'll have, left field's going to be 315, center's 385, synthetic field. We have dugouts. The home dugout will be at third base. Visitors will be at first here, and then we'll have, we'll be able to approach the seating area. It'll be at ground level and you will load down into the seats. So, anybody in a wheelchair, anybody that can easily be basically at ground level, be able to push right to the, to the back of the bleachers without a problem. We'll have a press box in each one as well. And likewise in softball, easy load from the top down. The home dugout will be at first base and then the visitor will be at third. We have, just to let you know, so that front, we're developing a front drive too here, so that'll be easy to, if you want to drop off somebody that doesn't want to have that huge walk, we, you know, they can drop off right there at the tickets and go right into the gate. Also, it's going to be used when the team needs to load up to go out of town. They can easily drive to the front, load up their equipment and head out, and also any of the visiting teams being able to come down. You can see that the field house at a lower level, and so these fields are going to actually be about eight to 10 feet lower than the ground level. So, we have ramps to go down to the lower field level and then, and steps as well on each side, so that'll get you down to the, to the lower level. This is the field house. So, the field house has the spines, the circulation that's running north and south. We have all the common spaces for softball storage with an overhead door, restroom and officials area, conference room, training, officials again as well, and baseball storage on the far right. So, that's easy access to the baseball and then easy access to softball when needed. Laundry room, technology, coaches for softball and their restroom facilities, storage for each of the sports, and likewise on the far right, the baseball offices and restrooms and support facilities. To the far left, we'll have the athletes that play softball. They'll have their lockers. They have showers and restrooms and access to the coaches if needed, and then go out to their field likewise for baseball also. They have their lockers, JV, varsity, restrooms and showers, and then you can easy access to the, to the fields. Up on the top of the plaza, the plaza will be up here, softball to the left, baseball to the right, centralized concessions. We have four points of cell, women's and men's restrooms, women's and men's restrooms to the right as well, and we have one family restroom as well. The seating chart here for baseball, we have in the center, we have the press box and support rooms at the bottom, stairs to get up. We have room for about six people up at the top. We have a little bit over 150 of chairbacks for the premium seating right there behind home plate. We have ADA and companion seating to the right and to the left, and we're close to about, let's see, about 800 something seats in this facility. And we'll have a canopy also above this, so the way the fields are oriented, it will give a nice shadow and shade for both fields. Softball likewise, we have about close to 100 chairbacks here for the premium seating behind the home plate. Again, ADA, easy access, and ADA companion seating to the left, to the right, and a press box also with six people that can sit at the very top. All right, so then this is just a quick section, but just showing where the concessions and restroom, this will be the ground level. You'll be able to come to the back and then load down into the bleachers and to the seating. And we'll have a canopy up above and then a press box up above that will be able to look over and have great sightlines for the home plate. As the dugouts are also, are true dugouts, they'll be about two and a half feet below the field level, okay? So, that, and that allows the people sitting in the back and to the side to be able to see the field and see outfield. All right, so here's some of the views. So, here's the first view of baseball. Again, it'll be synthetic turf. You can see the seating, the dugouts left and right, the canopy. You can see this lighting, flags and the scoreboard. We have the centralized field house concessions and restrooms, and then you can see softball beyond, and then you can have the, you see the parking as well. Likewise, a view from softball, you have a logo out there. You can do a number of things nowadays with the turf. You can do all sorts of patterns, colors, we've seen it all. So, that, we'll leave that up to the coaches and everybody that wants to decide how they want to see this. But you can see the seating, the dugouts, and the canopies and the field house, they're centrally located. You can start to see a little bit of the plaza and the walk that goes out to the parking. As you can start to see now is the path that actually gets you to the pedestrian bridge that will cross that creek to get you to the, to the stadium side. So, it'll be really neat to see how all the trees and all the nature and walking across that bridge to get you to the other side. It's going to be a really neat feature on this site. This is a view of the overall plaza and entry, the tickets. Here's softball, and here's baseball, press box, and then the centralized concessions and restrooms here at the center and a large plaza here in front. You can start to see a little bit of the press box beyond as well. The stadium view of baseball is, you can see, you don't see any poles right here in the front. Everything's to the backs, all tension, you know, backstop netting. So, you have your premium seating, your dugouts, and all your bench seating to the left and to the right. You can see here the ADA seating with companion to see the field. Likewise, in softball, you'll have the premium seating at center, you know, the tension, backstop netting, and the canopy up above. All right, so now we're going, moving on to the stadium. So, the stadium, you have your track, your turf. Home side will have 3,800 seats. The visitor will have 2,700 seats with tickets and restrooms here. We have, main gates will be here. They'll have a path leading to the parking and parking up north. They'll utilize the existing facilities for visiting teams. They'll be get dressed here and they'll be able to come down this path to get down to the, to the field. We have some jumping events here at the bottom right, the field house up north, and they'll have access to the parking, and students will park here and athletes will come over and come into and get dressed and go out for practice. We'll have ADA seating right here up north of the home side, so they can easily get to the, to the bleachers, and then having, be able to control access. This loop right here, they'll go around, will be an emergency loop. We'll call it a fire loop, but emergency cars or buses will have access to that loop as it goes around, so they can easily drop off the visiting teams, the band, and then can go in and settle in, and then they can go and park wherever they need to be. What we did now too is we have a home side concessions and restrooms. We have a center entry into the stadium, and it goes to the pedestrian bridge and then crosses and to the parking next to north of the baseball and softball. So, field house, two-story field house, looking at an alternate team meeting room here that we can see if the numbers come in, that we can afford that, then we'll give to everybody an opportunity to vote on that if they want to accept that alternate. To the right is a, looking towards a practice field a 60-yard, which the existing tennis courts are there and we're placing that with a practice field. And you can start to see the practice field over here to the right as well, and we have some throwing events down there as well. So, this is the lower level of the home side, so this will lead us to the pedestrian bridge that crosses a creek as we come here. We opened this up, the last time we showed it, we had gates on each side and we had centralized tickets. This, we just, we were looking and developing the design, it just... It just seemed so nice and strong to really capture that, that axes and bring everybody in from the homes on the, on the west side into the stadium. And now's, now too, you're starting to see a lot of the tickets are starting to be online. Uh, so, they're really, the ticket booths, you may just need one or two. Uh, and but if you do lease a facility, you may still have it open as well. So, we still have the, uh, have those, uh, tickets for information, will call and for sales. Uh, so, we do have, uh, uh, gates here where we can put the metal detectors and tables so they can do all the back check and then bring everybody in. Uh, this side, we have an apparel, uh, where they can sell shirts, uh, caps, all, uh, anything that you want to, supporting the team. Uh, then over here, we have a small little lobby room where, uh, any of the guests or coaches that are coming in to the press box can wait in a, in this room, get to the elevator and then go upstairs. Uh, what we have on the left and the right is symmetrical sizing of the concessions. And we have restrooms, uh, men's and women's. We, what we like to do is put the, uh, line management to be running north and south. So, that way, it's not running, uh, with the circulation here and blocking and causing a lot of congestion. So, we clean that up. It, it's, uh, it works out really well. We've been seeing it in a lot of our stadiums that we're developing lately. And it, it seems to work out really well for us, uh, and for the, and for the circulation patterns. All these stairs will take you up to the upper deck premium seating. Um, and then also take you up to the, to this, uh, area here, which would designate for a student seating and ADA as well down here at the bottom. We'll have ramps and stairs on the ends to get you up to this level. On the visitor's side, we have the path that we were showing from the parking, uh, come in here. We do have tickets here, but we have the main gates here. We have centralized concessions, uh, men's and women's restrooms. And then the circulation running north and south for the, uh, twenty-seven hundred seats. The press box, level one. So, as we, what we had before, we had the elevator centrally located. We, we moved it over here so we can have space down below to enter, uh, the stadium at center. Uh, so, we have the elevator here. As you come off the elevator, we have an observation deck in the corner. We have scouts room. Uh, then we have a film deck room, which, uh, can work also when you do have any kind of band marching contests. That's available. They, they like to have five, five judges. So, we, uh, make sure we have enough room for them. Um, and then we have our restrooms up here. And then we have a community room. Uh, you can have seating at the counter. You can have loose, uh, seating, two toppers, four toppers, uh, seating, uh, up on top and a serving counter, uh, little kitchenette. And then we have an outdoor, uh, observation deck as well on, on the far right. Uh, you can go up to the stairs, up to the second level, either through stairs or elevator or egress through the, uh, bleachers as well. So, this is the second level. This is all business. This is, as you get off the, the elevator, this is the video room where all the production will be for the scoreboards, uh, the press, um, home coaches. Uh, we have PA and clock, uh, radio, uh, visitor coaches, and then radio as well. Uh, restrooms, uh, and support rooms and an area where they can go and get beverages or any kind of snacks counter as well there. Uh, so, stairs at the corners through egress down to the lower levels and through the bleachers. So, this here is, shows the, shows you a section, uh, the ri- running through the press box. Uh, so, you can start to see here, this is our loop here. Now, you're not gonna have these vehicles here during the game. Uh, it'll be controlled and, and, and shut. But you'll have the pedestrian bridge that'll allow people to come over, uh, come to the center. Uh, elevator showing the section coming up, stairs up there, the upper, uh, level one and level two. You can see the bleachers, the upper premium level. And then the, uh, upper concourse, uh, where ADA and the student seating would be at the lower level. And then you'll have the lower concourse. You can start to see where all the bombatories and the stairs going up to the upper decks. This is an overall bird's eye view. Uh, we can see, looking towards the northwest, you can see the, uh, home side, the visitor's side, the new field house administration building that we're in today. Uh, and then across, you can see the softball and baseball and the centralized, uh, uh, field house. Another view is you start to see the axes of the pedestrian bridge coming over to the loop, crossing loop and entering right at center. Uh, we start to, opportunity to brand and however you would like. These are just, uh, uh, placeholders, but, uh, you know, flags, um, um, branding banners. Uh, we put the H logo here now. We did put, uh, uh, buzzy up here as well. And, uh, and we also have some other flags and, and at the pedestrian light lever. Another view looking towards the southeast, I'm sorry, southwest, sorry. And so, you can start to see how we even brand the, uh, the front of the building and start to really, uh, uh, make it a home for the Hornets here. There's a view from the field towards the press box, um, which you currently have right now, the, the big H at the center. Uh, you can see the lower level of the seating, uh, and then the upper level as well. So, this is the view coming from the home side, uh, parking and next to the baseball and softball, crossing the bridge. This is the view that you would have and coming in, uh, through, through the gates and then into, uh, directly to your seat. So, again, this is another view, just to give you another angle, as you can see the loop coming around the, the stadium. This is another view down the lower concourse. And so, you start to get the feel how the bleachers up above, the stairs going up. Uh, this is that room where guests or coaches come in to the room and then as, before they go up to the, uh, press box. And you can start to see a little bit of the main entrance here where all the gates are as well. And you can see the concessions and, uh, restrooms beyond. This, uh, uh, view of the community room, as you walk in, we'll have buzzy here on the wall. And it basically hides all the kitchenette. It stays, you know, looking clean. You come in, you have the vi- uh, a video on the wall, uh, graphics and branding. Uh, you have the, uh, front counter seating and then you'll have some high, uh, uh, two-top or four-top seating as well. And you can start to see the little observation deck to the far left as well. Another view looking back towards the front door, we were over here. And you can see the, the counter, the serving counter, the, the, the different type of seating, uh, place for a video, uh, monitor. And then you can see the observation deck access to the right. So, we're going to the field house now. So, the field house, we have our main entry. It's a two-level. Come in, elevator, stairs, uh, security access to the back. Um, yeah, on this floor, you have varsity to the far left. Uh, they can come, either come in from the top right or, uh, the bottom left here. They can get dressed and then go out directly to the field. Uh, freshmen and JV likewise, they have access here and they can actually have quick access out to the field. Uh, showers and restrooms for both. Uh, we have sports medicine, uh, trainer's office, changing and showers. And then, uh, a little hydro room for, uh, for tubs. Uh, laundry, all the, uh, little cubbies so they can pick up all their, their gear, uh, for the, for the day. And then, uh, equipment room, uh, as well in the back. We, we're gonna be looking at some sort of, uh, storage system, a management system so they can be able to stock everything as needed away. Yes? Is it better?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, as we get up there, we have the elevator stairs. We'll have, uh, uh, reception desk. Uh, we'll have assistant coaches. They all have visibility of the weight room. And they can all have the space and be able to meet and collaborate and plan for, uh, their day. Uh, there are restrooms and, uh, restrooms for guests as well. We have the offices for all the coaches and, uh, athletic director's, uh, office in the corner. Uh, we have an observation deck also looking out, uh, when needed, uh, to, to the stadium. I gotta use the other one. There you go. So, then the, the, uh, the field house, uh, we have the front door. They'll have access to the, uh, to the parking? Oh, that's okay. Oh, you want to put this? All right. That'll work. So, you can see the, uh, press box on the far right, uh, also fencing on the left and the right and access to the front door, either from the parking on the left or the parking on the right. Uh, start to have some glass transparency into that weight room, uh, as well. A view from the stadium side, looking at the observation deck, the offices and the weight room, uh, here in the far back, having a lot of views towards the stadium. These are the locker rooms below. These will be translucent, uh, not, uh, not transparent so that we block any views into the, to the locker rooms. Just nice to bring in some natural light into those, uh, to those rooms. And then some doors, uh, to the center. And then there's the access to the field, uh, for these two locker rooms. Then, uh, egress stairs as well from the second level. Uh, views from the, uh, second level of the field house out to the stadium. You can see the overall stadium. You can see the, uh, home and visitor side pretty well. Just a concept of what the locker room can be. We'll work that out as we get through the, to the document phase as well. So, the bond allocation is what we know is we have fifteen, uh, right now is fifteen million for the baseball and softball. We have, uh, thirty-five total project budget for the stadium and support, uh, facilities. Uh, we will be, uh, working and releasing, um, um, if we, uh, were, uh, approved today, we'll start the documents. Uh, we'll be releasing in, uh, February, uh, for both baseball and softball and the stadium. Uh, so, we're, uh, we'll be working away and getting that package out early next year. Okay. With that, and Sherry, Sherry's gonna help us out and put something up here for y'all. With that, we, uh, open up for any questions or any thoughts or?
Everybody's a little speechless.
This is not your father's act, Mike. This is unbelievable. Coming on the board in the nineties, for twenty years, Huntsville has talked about having a baseball and softball complex.
Yes, sir.
Drive out to where we have to play now for the city. The city should be ashamed of what they put in our school districts for, to be honest with you. But I'm not here to pound the city. I commend y'all. I, I'm proud of you. You put a lot of white and green in it. There's still too much black and gray. I, folks, we've been green and white forever. I don't know where we came with this black and gray stuff from. I, and this is just one board member speaking. I know there's a lot of citizens out there. I had one corner me today about the black and gray. And he said, JT, please get our two cents worth into that meeting tonight. I'm glad we got some white and green. I hope we get more white and green in there.
Yes, sir.
Brenham's proud of their white and green. Livingston's proud of theirs. It seems like we have faded away from our white and green. But we need to be strong with the white and green. It's about what the Hornets are about. It, it's, it's about what all our kids have grown up in this community about.
Yes, sir.
But this is an amazing plan.
Thank you.
If this thing turns out like you've put it to us tonight, this community's gonna be so proud.
Thank you.
So proud.
Well, we're, we're very dedicated, sir, to make sure that all this happens. Uh, we know it's in a tough market right now, but we're up for the challenge. And we wanna deliver, uh, this package to you. We, uh, we're, and we'll do whatever it takes to, to make it happen. So, um, so...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna, oh. Oh, okay. I just wanna thank every voter that went and voted for this bond. Um, this kinda gave me goosebumps to see the pictures and think about all the students who will be impacted by this. You know, you see the football team, the baseball, softball teams, but you also, the band, every kid in band, the track and field athletes, you know, the tennis, you know, players. There's fewer of those, but it's so many students that are impacted by this. So, I love the trees. I think it looks like the most beautiful athletic complex that I've ever been to because of the trees. And the school song for Huntsville High School starts with beneath the shadows of the pine trees. So, I hope you save everyone that's in the pictures and maybe a few more. Everyone that you can, because that is beautiful to sit there and see those fields surrounded by the pine trees. Very unique.
Yes.
It's very beautiful setting, so.
It is.
So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Uh, just a lot to be proud of with the imagery. Um, it's breathtaking. Uh, thank you for your work.
Yes.
And I, I agree, uh, with what she just said about the trees. I think the trees add to the aesthetics of, of our area. And as many as that you can save and, and create that look, it, it, what y'all did with the imagery tonight was just fantastic. Uh, you, you start to get a feel of what it can be and it's, it, it's chills.
Yes. Well, same to us, because we don't, uh, when we first start, started talking to Dr. Shepherd, we just couldn't believe the sight. And, uh, it's just, it's challenging. I have to say that. It is very challenging. It's challenging our engineers with every bit, uh, but we're, uh, they're working on it. And, uh, uh, but it's gonna be just a beautiful backdrop for...
We're more grateful that, for that hard work, 'cause we didn't have to go purchase any land for this, um, to work out what we have. But to use the terrain to give us something that's unique. So, uh, you could definitely say that when people come here to Huntsville, they're gonna experience something that they probably haven't experienced before with our terrain. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, and for the first time, we'll actually have a home field since the nineteen fifties.
And that pedestrian bridge. I just wanna walk on it already.
No, I have to correct him on that. We had our own, home baseball field in the late sixties, 'cause this old boy played on them home fields. But it was by the cemetery in Huntsville where...
The nineteen twenties or eighteen?
We're getting into a kinfolk discussion.
Uh, it really is amazing, 'cause that's something not just those of us who grew up here can be proud of. But the kids that are here and then the future generations that are here. And that's something that represents the community as a whole. And it will be talked about by everyone who plays, whether they're in our district or out of district, when they have a hosting, uh, band competitions or playoff games for others. So, we appreciate the insight. Coach Shepherd, thanks for all the work on that. You know, you mentioned too, the, the kids that are gonna be here, that are here right now that won't get to experience this and all the people from the past, even JT. Y'all got us here and, and now we're here and they're gonna get to come back and experience. I mean, I get to play here with a little, little experience and be proud of it.
I think the voters spoke with their vote. And to sit in the stands on Friday night and just hear everybody chat, we're gonna get our own stadium, we're gonna get our own stadium. It's coming. We will, I mean, it is just great. Thank you. And thank you, Huntsville.
I'm excited to see. I've got kids who are aging out, but, um, just to be able to see the progress and, and what our new kids that are coming up are gonna have. Um, I do have one question though about the tennis area. Is there gonna be restrooms or...
Yes, there was a building, I don't know if I mentioned that as a, yes, there's a bin in upper right corner, I mean, left corner.
Okay, the storage...
It's probably a core camp.
Yeah, it's a storage building as well, so...
This is, every time I drive by whatever you guys are gonna be doing, it's gonna be so exciting to, to... This is, every time I drive by whatever you guys are gonna be doing, it's gonna be so exciting to, to just think about, um, in a couple of years, what we're gonna be, so, thank you, we do appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, that being said.
I make a motion we approve, uh, these designs in accordance.
Second, I have a motion in the second, any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That's seven forty zero against, motion passing.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consider board approval of the design package for the Stewart Elementary, Huntsville Elementary and Samuel Walker Houston Elementary.
Which is the good pointer, the one on the left or the one on the right? All right, good evening, everyone, I'm Sophia again, and this is Jonathan. Um, I don't think this next presentation is gonna be quite as spectacular as the previous one. Um, we're doing classroom additions on elementary schools, which is also one of the areas. So, um, that being said, let's move on here.
They're trying to dump athletes before they get started.
Right, right, so, um, the thinking, we're bringing the design development presentation to everyone for the additions and renovations to the elementary schools, Stewart Elementary, Huntsville Elementary and Samuel Walker Elementary. So, um, we have been working together since July, um, with administrators and teachers just to develop what these classroom additions are gonna look like. And, um, we are at the design development phase, here's my fun little diagram here showing the different phases of design. So after this evening's, uh, presentation and hopefully your approval, we will move into construction documents. So, um, as we go through these, uh, when the bond. When the bond, um, planning was put together, these additions were individual projects. And as we move through the process, we decided, hey, it would be better just to combine them into one project to get better pricing when they go out for bid. So everything you're seeing in this presentation will be one project and bid together in one package. We also, as we went through it, applied certain, um, facility assessment, assessment priority, item ones to these campuses as applicable. So, when I hand this off to Jonathan, he's going to kind of walk y'all through each of those, um, different priority ones that have been applied to each of us. So, I'm gonna hand it off to you.
Sure. All right, so our classroom additions, um, so our first campus here, Estella Stewart Elementary. Um, and, and just to give you a little background, when we first approached these, um, especially with Estella Stewart, it, it, it's a combination of, um, additions over the years. You know, there's the, the main original building, but then it's been added on to, added on to, added on to. So there was no clear rhythm where to put our classrooms, other than we do have a, a good bit of land in the back. But we did actually initially look at pretty much every possible location around this building where we could add on to. And again, working with the, the campus administration, and, you know, they explained to us which areas were not gonna work and why they weren't. And so what, what was finally decided was with your core here, your, your cafeteria, uh, and then the way they circulate around the building currently, what made the most sense was to extend the corridor through and have a classroom addition in the back. And this would allow us, if ever, to do extend in the future, we already have a corridor set up where we could continue to grow, uh, and have a, a double line corridor going this way. Uh, this next slide gets into a little more, you know, a little zoomed in on where we are. If you're not familiar with the floor plan, this is one classroom currently, but in order to breach through, uh, and, and add our extension on, what we'll do is, is, is capture some space from this classroom. And this wall actually gets pushed over a little bit into the other classroom, these are just rather large classrooms to start off with. Uh, this brings them down still well within PEA standards and then, um, but again, so we're, we're renovating these rooms in order to get this corridor to, to add on to our core classroom addition on the backside. Pardon, and so, um, as Sophia had mentioned, the, the, the additional scope of work that we're, we're, we're still working through as, as we get, um, more information from our engineers and consultants. We are looking at getting the apparent drop off, off the main roads, um, so we're, what we're looking at is a couple of different ways to utilize, um, you know, there, there's an extended road at the moment over here. Uh, there's some additional land off to the, to the side as well, but we're, we're still working on that through with the engineers.
And we have received, um, a traffic study report, so we're going through that and, um, evaluating the recommendations of that traffic study and how it applies to our site, so.
So then we also have the, the three main, uh, group restrooms for the students, we'll be renovating those in the, in the process. We've also been studying the front security vestibule, uh, fencing around the entire site, uh, and upgrading the fire alarm systems. Some part of the building had been upgraded prior, but we'll, we'll be catching the rest of the building up to speed on that. Um, just to give you an idea what these extensions would look like, um, this is the existing campus. Um, and so then our extension will simply follow the, the rhythm of the windows and, and the panels that, that are on the existing. Again, this is the main, um, so again, the existing building, uh, that's the aesthetic and we'll just be continuing that aesthetic onto our additions that'll blend right in. I think we're moving on to our next campus, it's Huntsville Elementary. Uh, I kind of mentioned about, uh, Stewart not ha- not having a particular rhythm. When we first started with Huntsville Elementary, we couldn't help but see, you know, you've got a rhythm of classroom wings. So we did initially start with that for our cla- our five classroom addition, um, but again, working through just the, the economies of, uh, square footage and, and the monies we had allotted, we trimmed it down a little bit. We also didn't need the sixth classroom, but what they really needed on this campus was restrooms associated directly with the cafeteria, so that allows it kind of takes the spot of what, what could have been a classroom. As well as we need some mechanical space and, um, and then again, we'll have a, a direct access to the playground as do all these other, uh, classroom wings currently. I'll zoom in on this a little, so again, the, the general, what, what, what we'll do is this, this corridor currently ends, I think, just past those doors to the cafeteria. We'll extend that and that actually allows us to have an enclosed corridor to the, the gymnasium on the backside here before, you know, so again, we've, we've got our kids inside now for that whole distance. Um, again, we got our, our five classroom addition we needed, um, some mechanical space, a, a staff restroom, the group restroom for the children, uh, some additional storage. Our additions here were, um, primarily roof repairs and, and that's something where, where, we, we've had our engineers go look at and see the, the, the state of the existing roof and, and what it's gonna take to, to get it from just being the, uh, maintenance issue that it is right now. So then our addition, um, you know, so, so we're following the same aesthetic, but again, since our room has a little bit different shape, but the, the general idea is that it's the, uh, the brick wainscote, uh, the metal panel, the, uh, standing steam slow roof. All that aesthetic, we'll, we'll just continue to try to blend in this addition to the original campus to make it look like it was always part of it, not, not stand out as an addition. Did we? Okay, so, yeah, so Samuel Walker Houston, um, same kind of idea in the, the rhythm, right? So you have these, these six classroom banks, uh, that, that come off the main corridor, so that was originally our design intent, was to, to, to continue that rhythm. Um, again, once we got engineers involved, we found out we've got some building setback lines that cut right through up against us. So what we did was effectively just shifted, um, these classrooms up, um, the existing corridor, uh, you know, it doesn't require any additional extension there. And again, talking to the campus and what they have and what they need, we do have the additional group restrooms as they have on the other ones, on, on the other, uh, classroom bays. But again, we get our sixth classroom addition, a small mechanical room, uh, and this door leads out to the playgrounds that on the backside. Um, the additions, the, the additional scope for this project, um, we, we originally, or had identified the, the fifty parking spaces. What we've, um, done is planned for additional parking, uh, off the road here. And we've identified that, you know, the, we only need about half as many as we originally called for, so we're, we're only calling for, I believe, twenty-four spaces and then we have an additional, uh, the way, the way we're laying it out is we can add additional spaces in the future if needed. This re-rating the area to the west, that, that's something that we, we're still discussing and understanding how all of these projects will require some detention, uh, as, as directed by the, at the county. But so that's just, jumping around, uh, as part of the process. For the architecture, again, it's just some security work on the doors, uh, we're renovating a few of the group restrooms in the building, um, card readers on the exterior doors, uh, perimeter fencing, uh, for a, a portion of the site. And then, uh, we're, we're reworking the front entry vestibule, 'cause if they're, they're, currently, I think, the one that's, there's, actually, there's not one on this campus, right? So, the, writing up your front entry vestibule. Uh, again, so our aesthetic here is, learn how to work these buttons, um, the existing campus, and so this is our, our new addition. So the idea is that we will simply follow that brick pattern, we've got brick wraps coming out matching the brick, try to get as close as possible so that it, try to get it to blend seamlessly in. And then just come in front of the, uh, more of the driveway side looking back at the, the campus. Any question about the layouts of campuses?
You didn't mention any vent, uh, fencing for Huntsville Elementary, are we not gonna do any?
I, I don't think we've discussed that yet, but it is something that we can consider and look, look into.
Yeah, I think it, it simply wasn't identified in the original priority list, at that point it becomes more of a, um, an add alternate to.
Cause your playground area is just open.
The backside of the whole kid, the backside of the, the, the site.
The, the existing playground?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at that again, see if we can put some fencing around that.
Are there any other questions that were moved on? Okay, so, um. Moving on to just our project, project schedule, so I referenced it a little bit at the beginning, uh, we're at the end of design development, uh, we're presenting this evening. So after this evening, uh, based on any approval that we receive, we'll move into construction documents, uh, and from there, we'll be issuing for bid in March. At which point we'll, uh, start construction in April and then, uh, we should be finished up by May of twenty twenty-three. And our project budgets, um, as I mentioned before, when we were planning for the bond, we had them separated into three separate, uh, projects. We've also taken the applicable item, priority one items from the facility assessment and gone ahead and applied that for a total construction cost of six million two eighty-three, three thirty-three. And, um, as you all are aware, we are, um, in the process of interviewing and, um, receiving bids for construction managers at risk. So we will be evaluating our proposals, uh, in the next couple of weeks and, um, once we determine as a group, as a committee, on the best candidate, we will bring that back to the board for recommendation and for your approval. And once they come on board, they will start weighing in on these, um, cost estimates and giving us more, um, finite detailed information as we go through the, the project on our budgets, so. And I think, I think that's at the end, so, um, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, uh, great to see this, uh, work as well, how does the Scott Johnson, Dr. Shepherd, maybe this is, question to you, how does Scott Johnson renovations with, uh, HIS fit into the timeline? We also have the solution to that one as far as the, the grade realignment.
I don't have it in front of me, but all of the projects will be, if on schedule, if we can do all grade alignment, nobody are gonna fall off twenty twenty-four. So, uh, we have the schedule, it's on the wall, you can go with a gigantic poster. Uh, th- these were established as one project, so that would be in the next set of projects.
I know it wasn't tied with this, just to hear it, you know, yeah, the timeline, thank you.
Right, it's nice to see the classroom additions and remember that that's part of the grade realignment and making the pre-K through five at all the elementary campuses. We're not just sticking four to six extra rooms there, thinking more people are coming.
There are already people to put in those rooms.
Right, exactly, that's not.
They're just in a different building right now.
Right.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bailey promised me the next time he was going to have a video of football players and baseball players running.
Yeah. I think our, our next.
And everything.
I think our next presentation will be on Matt's Park and, and, uh, we were just talking about, we're gonna have a football team running through.
So he can keep up and walk.
Actually, we'll make sure that every project has a football team.
Is this one on here?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sharon, any more discussion?
They need it.
I move to approve the plan as presented by TDK for the, uh, design package for the three elementary campuses.
I have a motion, I have a second motion, so, any more discussion? So, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That's seven forty zero against, motion passing.
You guys are free, I, I know you attend any more meetings, so feel free to.
I bet they're not as much fun as this one though.
Sophia, the.
Free to go for a question.
We're gonna go to start at the break.
We're heading back to the office.
Sophia, do you have an extra set still?
The next slide, the report discussion.
Thank you. Sure, we have more, if you need. Okay, thank you, thank you Jonathan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, Superintendent and Board, before we get started, uh, I wanna introduce a couple of special guests with me tonight, uh, one of the partners, Greg Yee, he's gonna be passing out some, some calendars to you. And also present is, uh, our Chief Representative Stacy Moteet, she's come to give us support and also answer any questions that we may be unable to answer. So, uh, let me go over here and, uh, get started with that.
All this exciting information, it's not quite as, uh, neat as having pictures of, of stadiums, but, uh, this is gonna be basically, uh, one of the kind of reports I give every year. And basically what it does is it gives you a real quick overview of your delinquent tax rule. Uh, the first tab is gonna be your tax calendar and that tax calendar is the same for every year, so you can just substitute twenty twenty with twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. These are just important dates to remember, uh, dealing with the assessment of taxes and collection of taxes, penalties and interest. You know, your January first date, uh, the date that determines the owner, ownership of the property and that's who is responsible for the payment of the taxes. The tax lien attaches to all property, personal and real property. And then your next date is of course October, uh, October's when your tax bills go out to all your taxpayers. And they have until February first to pay those taxes and currently, what's gonna be going out now are the twenty twenty-one taxes, okay? So just keep in mind, everything is, is, uh, postponed until, uh, later dates. So the twenty twenty-one tax bills will be coming out in October, they have until February first to pay it. After February first, penalty and interest starts accruing to the district and, uh, the tax. And the tax office will continue to try to collect those amounts up until July first. But before July first, they also mail out another notice to the taxpayer saying, if you don't pay it by July first, they're going to turn it over to the attorneys. And then we get to tack on another penalty, a 15% collection penalty. So if you haven't paid your 2021 taxes by July first of 2022, it's turned over to us. And the report tonight is to discuss those 2020 taxes, not the 21s. Of course, that'll be next year. This is for the 2020 taxes that were just turned over to our firm in July. And the data that we're going to be talking about tonight is through September 30th of this year. So we've had about three months. So we'll be discussing some of the performance and other issues. That's your tax calendar. And if you'll turn the page over to the pie charts. I've taken your total delinquent role. That includes all years. And we've broken it down in pie charts to identify the status of the outstanding delinquent taxes. And you'll see at the top, 27% of your entire role is already in lawsuits and litigation, which is good. We try to keep it around 30% or 35% or even higher. So but 27% have active suits on it or judgments. 42% of your entire role is action pending. Now that... Most of that is the 2020 taxes that were just turned over to us. So the action pending means that we're out there trying to contact taxpayers, get them under a commitment to pay or a payment agreement. And if we can't get them to pay it back in a payment agreement, then we have to go to the next step. And that is file a collection lawsuit. And with the collection lawsuit, we move toward judgment. And even after we take a judgment, we try to get the taxpayer on a payment plan. Because we're not in the real estate business, we'd much rather have the money flow coming in rather than try to sell the property. But lately, we've been having very, very good success in our tax sales, only because it's the sign of the times. It seems that people are wanting to put their money into property rather than stock markets or any other investment. So it's been a windfall for the district. So these tax sales have really been generating a lot of good results. Our next tax sale will be coming up in December. And then if you'll see the other classifications that we have in statuses, you have 21% of your entire role is in deferrals. Now, those deferrals are for folks that are over 65 or disabled. And they get to defer their taxes until they pass or until they sell their property. 4% is in bad addresses, 2% is partial pay. Those are the payment agreements that we try to get people into. When the accounts are turned over to us in July, our phone centers are required to make three phone calls, no less than to try to get in touch with them. Because if you get in touch with your taxpayer, you can get them on a payment plan, find out the situation. They may have sold it and not told the appraisal district. Because it is a responsibility of the taxpayer to keep the appraisal district updated on when they move so that we can send out tax bills to them. And there are a total of probably four per year that get mailed out to the taxpayers. And then you've got your uncollectibles and then your other combined, which is your bankruptcies and so forth. The next chart, real quick, is just a chart showing the breakdown of where your delinquent role falls in categories. And you'll see that 1,000 to 2,500, 2,500 to 5,000, and 5,000 to 10,000 make up a lot of the roles. This... The only useful thing I see in this is it just tells you when people start getting in trouble. And most of it is when they start becoming $1,000 and up behind. That's when they get in trouble. And that's when we have to reach out to them and try to get them on a payment plan. The next chart is your tax year chart. And basically what this does, it just breaks it down by year. And you'll see that the largest amount of your delinquent role is your 2020s. It's 27% of your entire role. And then you'll see the 19s, which had already been turned over to us last year. It's 18%. And then, as you see, as the years go by, that percentage goes down. The next chart behind the turnover chart, you've got a pie chart there. And what this illustrates is the piece of the pie that's remaining after your tax office has done all that they could do to collect it through July first of the following year. And as you can see, as of July first of this year, the tax office has collected 97.53% of your levy, which is a very good rate. That leaves only 2.47% of the role for us to collect. But the numbers that you have are very good in your collection numbers for your current levy. Now, you can see the numbers here in the breakdown of the current levy. And then what was collected as of July first or June 30th and what was remaining. So this just gives you an idea of what piece of the pie that's really actually given to us. It's just a small sliver of the pie, and the rest of it is collected by the tax office. Your next chart is what I call our report card every year. And what... Basically what this does is it takes your role by each year. And you have your base tax, which is your original levy. And of course, your turnover date is always going to be July first. And then that base tax turnover amount is in green. That's what we get. That's what we start out with. And this year, y'all have given us 866,000. And as of 9:30, we've collected 32.38% of that. And then on the very far right, you'll see the percentage of the original levy combined. That's through the efforts of the tax office and our firm. And of your original 2020 levy, you've already collected 98.46%. And our goal is to try to get as much to 100% as we can. But we'll never get 100% of what we assess. And also, I want to point out that this does not include penalties and interest. This is just base tax. So we want to look at real numbers. We don't want to throw in the penalties and interest to inflate the fact that we've collected more money. That money is... That goes to the district. That's extra. So we just stick with basic numbers. And as you'll see, if you'll look in the past, 2019, 2018, all the way down to 2009, you'll see those percentages go up. And our goal is, the firm is to collect at least 90% of what you've given us. And we hit that number about probably six or seven years down the road. And then as time goes by, it increases up to where of your 2009 role, we've collected 96.19% of what you gave us, which is, I think, is a very good number. The remaining percentages that we don't collect, those are lost through either write-offs after tax sales, because you're never always going to get at a tax sale 100% of your taxes. But lately, we have been. So we don't know how long that trend will last, but we hope it continues. And then finally, behind the yellow tab is your top 25 delinquent accounts. This just gives you an idea of where most of your top delinquencies come from. And I've got it broken down to those accounts that are in litigation, those that have the deferrals. And then we have one that's got a title issue. And then we have one that's a commitment to pay. It's a 2020-only, so we haven't filed suit. But this will just give you an idea of a total. As a matter of fact, if you look in the very last page, it'll give you the total of $355,000 of your entire tax... Delinquent tax role is right there in your first 25 accounts. Do we have any questions? Okay. If not, my phone number is on the front. My cell phone's there. If you ever hear any mumblings or concerns from some of your constituents, just please call me and let me know, because we want to address it and take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I was almost as excited as the athletic president. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report on the Board of Trustees' continuing education hours for the 2020-2021 school year. So the tab requires trustees to have a certain amount of continued education hours for new trustees, which is a good question to get. You had to have 25 hours of continuing education. And the experienced trustees, after the first year, requirements are between nine and 16 hours. So Mr. Holler had 22 hours point seven five, 22 hours and 45 minutes. Mr. Langland had 11 and a half hours. Mrs. Owens had 15 hours. Mrs. Switzer had 30 hours. Mrs. Stout had 13 hour... 13.25 hours. Mr. Morton had 29.75 hours. Dr. Williams had 18.75 hours. And Dr. Shepherd had 21.75 hours. So everyone has exceeded, met and exceeded their required amount. Do we need to vote on that?
No, you don't. You just need to now.
Next item on the agenda is a school improvement plan for all. Mr. Forney, you can mention that.
As we're remembering to introduce the group to talk, I did want to kind of practice the introduction that Mr. Forney is going to make, just to say that, you know, we joke and about, you know, the stadium and all those improvements, and those are exciting, no doubt. But what we're here for is academic improvement. And we have taken great strides toward that. I had the privilege this year to start attending our School Improvement for All visits. And the first one I went to was actually the high school. Mr. Fraino is sitting in the back. And he and his team just did an amazing job. I mean, I left there in all of the incredible work that was going on at that campus. And then shortly thereafter, I... It was kind of a schedule where I got to go to the Huntsville Intermediate School Sifa visit. And again, I just... I left there inspired and just incredibly impressed with the amount of work that is going on to improve instruction for our kids and improve our schools for our community. And it's not like it used to be. I mean, I'll just kind of say this, you know, that when I was a kid, you went to school and your fate was sort of in the hands of that individual teacher that you got assigned. And now, teaching is a science. And there's a whole different approach to serving all kids. And when I walked out of that meeting at HIS, I just said, you know, called Mr. Forney and said, "We've got to let the board see this. We've got to let the community see this." It was that impressive. So for Ms. Branch and her team that you're going to do it from in a moment, it's incredible information and incredible work. They're going to give you a snippet of... I mean, our School Improvement for All visits are a couple of hours long, very intense look at the progress being made on the campus. But you've got to know that behind the scenes, what's going on at their campus is being supported by Mr. Forney. And I've seen an IT that helped make all that happen. So I... It was kind of a long-winded way to say, this is about focusing on HIS tonight. But please know that they are representing their colleagues at every campus. This is a snapshot of what you would see if you went to a Sifa or School Improvement for All visit at any campus in Huntsville ISD today. This is what you would see. And it's incredible work. So with that, I'm turning it over to Mr. Forney.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees. Dr. Shepherd, thank you, sir, for that background and snippet about our School Improvement for All visits. The School Improvement for All visits are simply checkups. What we check, we're checking to make sure about the academic as well as the instructional health of each campus. When you think about going to the doctor's office, it's always better to go to the doctor's office to get a checkup. Because if you wait too long, the doctor has to turn it into an autopsy. And so instead of us looking at an autopsy, we want to do a checkup. And so that's basically what it is in a nutshell. And it's based on the research of the PLC process. It's based on the research that goes into the four big rocks that we utilize here in Huntsville ISD. And it's just a phenomenal process. And again, we're basically inspecting what we expect, expecting what we inspect on each individual campus. And I guess a good description of it also would be it is a professional mirror in order for us to look at ourselves as a campus, as a classroom teachers, and also as an administration to make sure that we're doing the right things for our individual campuses, to make sure that the needs of our students are being met. And I just want y'all to know, I'm excited this evening about this. The stadium is nice, it's fine, but I'm excited about what's happening in the classrooms in Huntsville ISD. So I don't want to steal her thunder, but without further ado, I'm going to ask that Ms. Rachel Branch will come. She is the principal and the lead learner at Huntsville Intermediate School. And she would also introduce her team. And she's going to present her presentation, her Sifa visit for us on this evening. Thank you, Ms. Branch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Forney. Thank y'all for letting us present tonight. We're excited about it and a little nervous, so... So we'll get started. I want to go ahead and introduce, because it's not just going to be me. You're not just going to hear from me. But I do want to introduce Ashley Fissler, my Dean of Instruction. She's going to be presenting as well. I'd also want to introduce... We have three instructional coaches on our campus. One could not be here tonight. She's ill. But we do have Dr. Ashley Murray, who is our English and Social Studies Instructional Coach. And then Amanda Pankook, who is our Science Instructional Coach. We're really excited to have her here this year. This is her first year. So she's been... She's already been making a big impact on our campus. So they'll both be coming up in a few minutes and talk a little bit about their data. I also want to introduce Stacy Godby, who's one of our assistant principals, who came here just to be supportive of us. So we're excited that she's here.
I'm the cut man.
So to get started, and, you know, I appreciate that introduction because it does kind of help you to understand what we're going to be presenting on tonight. But our School Improvement for All visits, when we put those together, we try to give a snapshot of our campus so that, you know, just kind of looking at our data, looking at things that are going on. So I want to start off that the way we set this up, since we tried to take a snippet of what we presented to our district administrators, was we wanted to look at the plan that we've put in place for our school improvement. So a lot of this planning took place last spring. You know, when we realized that we weren't going to get a rating, when, you know, it wasn't... We weren't going to get accountability rating, we realized we had an opportunity to really look at our procedures, our processes, what we were doing, to make sure that we were putting good systems in place so that we were ready to hit the ground running this year. And, you know, growing our kids, that's our most important thing. So the pre-planning started in the spring. And we really realized that growth doesn't happen by chance. It happens because we're being intentional with what we're doing. So to start off, the first thing we have to do is we have to make sure we have kids at school. So one of the things we always look at in our Sifa visits is our attendance, what's going on with that. So the bar graph that you're looking at here, to kind of make it sense, is we basically took a snapshot of each week. So this starts from the first week of school up until the 20th of October. And you can notice at the beginning of the year, we were seeing quite a few absences. A lot of that had to do with what was going on at that time in terms of people who were out ill, people who were still quarantining or, you know, still not sure about coming to school. As you can see, though, as the school year has progressed, we've gotten much, much better. And our attendance rates now, we've been the last two weeks, we've had multiple days each week where we've been over 95% of our students in attendance each day. And so we've been pretty excited about that to see that we're getting our kids to school because we need them there for us to be able to do the work that we have to do. One of the other initiatives, so we got to get them to school, but we also have to make sure that we have an engaging classroom for our kids, right? We want to make sure that that classroom management is in check. So one of the programs that we were fortunate to be able to be a part of, it was HIS and Mans Park that got to participate in this this summer. We trained over 90% of our staff in the Capturing Kids Hearts. Capturing Kids Hearts is a program that their purpose is to grow the staff and the students, grow them socially, their social capacity, their emotional capacity, and their learning capacity. And so all of... We had teachers, we had parent professionals that attended this training this summer. It was a two-day training. And through that training, they learned lots of different strategies on how to manage their classroom, how to grow their students. So we realized there was a lot of strategies in that. And we wanted to make sure that we... So, we realized there was a lot of strategies in that, and we wanted to make sure that we implemented it well. So, we decided as our commitments were that we were going to look at three of the strategies from Capturing Kids Hearts. And as a campus, we were going to be committed to implementing those. So, one of those is affirmations, because who doesn't like getting a positive comment, right? So, we're working on affirmations in our classroom. And those affirmations can come from staff to students, but they can also come from students to students. So, we work on training our students on how to appropriately give affirmations. We're also, the greeting at the door was another commitment that our staff made. And the greeting at the door is great because it helps us to really connect with each student, but also to kind of see how they're doing for the day. Because, you know, when students come in, sometimes they come in and they're, they may have had a bad night. And so, this gives our teachers a chance to kind of check in with each student, see if there's some additional help or support they might need. And then the third one is our social contract. And this might be one you're not as familiar with. But our social contract is a, it's basically a contract that the students and the teachers build together. And they build it in each class. So, each class period, they go through and they talk about how do they want to be treated? How do the students want to be treated? How do they think their teacher wants to be treated by them? And they come up with words. They also talk about how do they want to be treated if there's conflict, like if there's a problem. And they come up with words that describe that. So, you'll see respect, you'll see engaged, present, try and help me out a couple of other words. Prepared. And so, then they build this contract, and then all the students sign or initial that contract that they're, that this is the contract they built, and this is how they want to be treated and how they want to treat their teacher. And it's a great teaching tool for that teacher when there's not respect, for example, in the classroom. That teacher can go back to that social contract and point out, remember, we signed this, we agreed to act this way. So, it's a great teaching tool for them to help manage that classroom because, again, we want engaging classrooms for the work that we're doing. So, the other thing we want to make sure is we want to make sure that we're providing our students with all the tools they need for learning. So, we, last year, obviously, there was a lot of work done with virtual learning. You know, we had about half of our kids that were virtual at one point last year. And so, Google Classroom became kind of our means of how to do that. And so, we wanted to kind of maintain that this year. So, I'm going to let Ms. Fissler talk a little bit, and we've got a couple of slides to show you what some of our Google Classrooms look like.
Thank you. Just like Ms. Branch said, we wanted to continue all the resources and strategies that we used last year by continuing to use Google Classroom this year. This provides a central point that allows students, parents, and teachers to access the curriculum at any point in time. It keeps students connected to the curriculum as well as keeps them engaged as a point of reference when they struggle, when they need to go back and look at the lessons, when the parents want to help their students out with the homework, but it's been a little bit since they were able to help them with it, and the parents want to reference to. This is a really good point of reference for schools, parents, and students as well to utilize. One thing we did to make it easy for the parents and students was we streamlined the way it looked. So, no matter at HIS, if you were in fifth grade or sixth grade, or what content area you were in, your Google Classroom was going to look the same. That way, as a parent or a student, I know that if I go here, I'm going to find this information, and it's going to be consistent across the board. And what you're going to see is it's going to be broken down by day. And each day is going to have the daily agenda or the daily tasks that need to be completed. So, here's an example. It says, step one, watch the YouTube video. Step two, complete the notes. And then, step three, complete the independent practice. And then, all of those pieces that the student and parent needs to reference is there under that day, listed directly what needs to be completed. So, this is good for our students who are out maybe for a couple of days or an extended amount of time to keep up with the material that's being taught in the classroom. As well as students who are present that day, if they need that additional support, if that parent does want to help, they can also utilize Google Classroom as well. And it's just a constantly updated resource for our families.
So, the other, so again, in addition to what we're doing in our classroom with instruction every day, we also wanted to make sure that we were providing a way to intervene for students that might be struggling or needing help. So, we came up, and we actually started this last spring. We started it around January of last year. And we call it Hornet Time. I think it's called that in just about every school. We tried to come up with another fascinating name, but we couldn't. So, we came up with Hornet Time. Hornet Time happens in all of our core areas, math, reading, and science. It's intervention based on student need. So, what we do is, you can see up there that reading has it on Mondays and Wednesdays, math on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and science, because they do a lot of hands-on lab-type things in their Hornet Time, they do one day a week, but they do it for a little bit longer. This is a, usually, it's thirty minutes. Our schedule, we have eighty-two minute classes. And so, because of that, we have time built into our schedule to allow for Hornet Time. And so, we use that time. We go ahead and our, during our PLC, or when our teachers are meeting, they look at the data from whatever the last assessment was, and they determine what are, what was the learning target? So, what was the essential standard, the thing that the student really had to learn for that particular unit? And then, they look at their data to see where the students were. And they group students based on that data because we want to make sure that we're intervening for students at where they need. We want to meet students where they are, and we want to grow them. So, in those meetings, and you'll see a little bit of what the data form that we use a little bit later in the presentation, the teachers actually switch students around. So, for example, I have four, four math teachers in fifth grade and a bilingual math teacher. So, what they do is in that meeting, they look at their data, and the kids who got the standard, they're going to get enrichment. So, we're going to group them together, and they're going to go with one teacher, and that teacher is going to do an enrichment lesson. And then, maybe those students who were just really close to getting that standard, they're going to be grouped together, and they're going to go with a different teacher so they can get what they need, and so forth. And we just group them that way. They're typically in these groups for about two weeks, and they go those two days a week. And then, at the end of that two-week cycle, we do a, an assessment to see, did it work? You know, are they getting it now? Have they now mastered that particular learning standard? And if not, then we look at what do we still need to do to help that child? And then, we, we switch those groups again because now, at the end of that two weeks, we've gone on to a new learning standard. And so, the kid who might have been in the enrichment group for this particular standard might be in the almost group for the next standard. So, they switch around, they get to hear it from different teachers and different perspectives. We saw some really good gains in our star scores at the end of last year. And we really credit a lot of that to the intervention that we were providing because it was very targeted to what a student needed so that that student could grow. So, again, part of that plan of how we're going to grow students goes into what was our focus. So, like I said, we started this kind of in the springtime and in the summer. And we looked at what do we want to do, because we want to improve that instruction, right? Because the best instruction we can do is that first-time instruction. So, we came up with our HIS non-negotiables. And these are things that we expect to see in every lesson, every day in each of our classrooms. And these are three things that we've asked our teachers to do. One is we want to make sure that each lesson has an engagement strategy. An engagement strategy is simply a hook, something that grabs that student's attention and gets them interested in learning what they're going to learn that day. It could be something that lasts a couple of minutes, it could be five or ten minutes. But it's something that's quick, but it engages the student. We provided our teachers with lists of different types of engagement strategies. It could be something as simple as turn to your partner and talk about the lesson that I just presented or the idea, and get the students talking about their own learning, all the way to something even more elaborate. We also want our teachers to do mastery checks because when we're up here teaching and we've taught the lesson, we got to know, did they get it or not? Because if we're going to figure out how to intervene or how we're going to help them, we got to know if they got it. So, again, we've asked each of our teachers to do a mastery check. We came up with a lesson plan structure for them to where that mastery check is kind of in the middle of the lesson so that when they teach their lesson to the students for the day, whatever that new material is, then before they let the students then practice it, we need to check to see, did they get it? And so, that can be an exit ticket, it could be a thumbs up if you got it, thumbs down if you didn't. Lots of different ways that they can do this. But then, once the students are working on independent practice work from that mastery check, I can now pull small groups of students who didn't get it and work, and give them that lesson again, maybe in a different way or with different hands-ons or manipulatives. And so, small groups is one of our other non-negotiables because we know we got to meet kids where they are. And the best way to do that is to pull them in those small groups for those kids who aren't getting it. So, those were our three non-negotiables that we've asked our teachers to have in every lesson. And it's part of what we monitor when we do our walkthroughs to see if those are happening. We're providing professional development for our teachers through our faculty meetings, through our PLC meetings, which they meet with twice a week in their conference time, to provide them with examples, strategies, and support to be able to do these. We also have been fortunate, and thank y'all for that, for the Solution Tree collaboration. Solution Tree, we have a Solution Tree coach that we've been, the campus has been meeting with. She was there the year before I got there, and then I worked with her last year and again this year. She's been an invaluable resource for us, helping us kind of troubleshoot what should our instructional focus be. She's helped a lot in our PLCs with making sure that we're working on the right work, making sure that we are asking the right questions, having the right discussions. We implemented a new data analysis protocol, or we call it our Data Dig. And we're going to show you a little snippet of that in a second. And she's kind of helped us work through, like, what are the types of questions we need to be asking teachers so that they reflect on their data the right way so that we can make good decisions based on that data? We're trying to really focus our PLCs where it's really focusing on our students. Where are our students? What do we need to do for them? So, that when we're designing lessons, when we're designing intervention, that we're making sure that it's targeting the right things at the right level. And so, that Solution Tree collaboration has been huge for our PLC process. And we've really made a lot of gains in PLC. And you'll see that in a minute because we're going to show you a little bit of our data. So, I'm going to let Ms. Fissler talk a little bit about the Data Dig form because she was very instrumental in helping us get this implemented in our school this year.
Ms. Branch had talked briefly about implementing a new Data Dig form. And just like she had referenced, the point is to get down to the student. It's for each teacher to get to know each and every single one of their individual students, and then what each of those individual students needs to then provide support. What the Data Dig form does, and I'll have pictures of it, is it really shows teachers the impact of their instruction on teach, on the students. So, they can take a look at, I have given this lesson. How did my students take this lesson? What else can I do to provide support to them? It aligns what is taught and how it's assessed, so on quizzes, on tests. It aligns that to make sure students are getting the right kind of instruction. And like I said, it narrows it down to the individual student to make sure that every kid is getting what they need in order to be successful and to help them grow. So, the Data Dig form has several components to it. And this isn't all of the components, but it starts very broad. And it starts just by looking at overall scores. So, how did we do as a grade level content? So, for example, sixth grade ELA. How did sixth grade ELA do on this test, this assessment, or this CFA, which is like a midpoint quiz in the unit? And then, it breaks it down by teacher. So, how did each teacher two do on this assessment, whichever one it is? And here's where the teachers share, I really did this, this is how I grew. Someone's going to ask, another teacher's going to say, well, how did you do it? Can you explain that to me? I want to try that in my classroom. And it really gets teachers collaborating with each other and sharing ideas with each other and not keeping them to themselves, or not feeling like they don't have anything to say. But it gets them sharing with each other. The Data Dig form, we look at it by question number. So, we look at question number one. What was that question talking about? How did students do? So, now, we're looking at types of questions. So, where did students struggle with the most? Where did they perform really well? And how am I going to support them continuing through this process? And then, it breaks it down by class period, again, by teacher. So, I'm looking at by different teacher. And there, again, they're comparing, here's what I did for my classroom. And it just opens up that conversation for teachers to share with each other to help them support each other through this process because they're all teaching the same thing, they're assessing the same way. But we all know that our kids have different needs. So, this really just creates that collaborative environment where they're sharing with each other. And then, it'll also go down, go down to, it's not on here, but the individual students. So, which students need more support? Which students need more enrichment? And it'll break it down by actual students, by actual individual students for each class period. So, it's very targeted and very specific. Off to the side, it's cut off a little bit, there's a typing box. During this Data Dig process that we go through, that we go through with teachers, there's reflective questions. So, if it's the midpoint assessment, they reflect on what can I do between now and the end of the unit to really help my students grow? Or if it's at the end of the unit, what changes do I need to make? How can I provide more support within the next unit as well? And there's reflective questions for teachers to work through and talk through together on how to best support our students.
So, our, these are our star goals for this year. And we have a very ambitious goal. Our goal for HIS is that we're going to be at least a C when we get our accountability ratings. And we've talked with our teachers about that. And in order to do that, we have to grow ten percent from our two thousand and twenty-one star scores in every tested subject and at every level, approaches, meets, and masters. So, it's a, it's a pretty aggressive goal, it really is. But we feel like the work that we're doing and this, the success that we're starting to see from our students can get us to this goal. And so, we feel like it's important that we have this aggressive goal because it's what's best for our students, because we want them to succeed and we want them to grow. So, we're going to talk a little bit about our data, and I'm going to bring up our coaches in a second here to talk a little bit about their data. And you're going to start to see, it's color-coded, so I'll, I don't want to steal their thunder, but it's color-coded. So, you're going to see that we're starting to see growth that shows us that this goal, that we can actually do this. So, we're going to start with our ELAR data. And I know Ashley mentioned CFAs, but I just want to make sure, our CFAs are what we do prior to a test. Usually, they're on one or maybe two standards, where a test might be on three or four standards. But we pick those standards that are really important, right? Those ones that are essential. And those are the ones we do the CFA on because we want to see our kids getting it before we get to that, that unit test. And then, that, then they have the unit test after that, and they intervene in between there. So, Ashley, you want to? The other Ashley, Dr. Murray.
Hi, good evening. So, as far as ELAR, again, we started planning last spring. What are we going to do? Reading is so vital, and we want to be proactive before coming in, you know, with our new group of students. So, we felt the need for a change. And Dr. Johnson was very vital in this pre-planning as well. Last spring, we started working on CNI documents for this school year. We redesigned units because we really wanted our focus on the integration of reading and writing because if we're good readers, then we're good writers, okay, and vice versa. And so, we were even able to pre-plan with our teachers this summer, those that had been hired, those that had been here with us prior to the summer. And so, during that time this summer, we knew that we needed to incorporate small group reading instruction for our new school year. And so, we were able to meet this summer, and the teachers were trained on guided reading. We just felt that this was so vital, and a lot of students who maybe missed the prior school year or missed some days, we needed to get their reading levels where they needed to be. And as well as when we're teaching, we have to teach to the level of the standard. I don't know how familiar y'all are with our TEACs, but they can be very complex for our students. And they can involve a lot of strategic thinking. And so, we have to, in our PLCs, when we're meeting together, that we have to be teaching to the level of the standard. Our activities, our resources have to be aligned to our standards in order to meet our goals. And as you can see, this school year, you see a lot of green. We started out with some white, but we're getting there, right? We're growing. And so, it's just staying consistent across grade level contents. We're incorporating a lot of the same strategies, a lot of comprehension strategies. And so, we're really becoming uniform this year, and I'm really proud of the team so far. Thank you.
And I just want to point out that that green means that they met, they are above their goal. So, the goal is in yellow. The green means that they're, they were above their goal. And I think the most exciting thing that we're seeing is, last year, when we would do an assessment, we, of course, we would still do Data Digs, right, in PLC. But a lot of times, our teachers, when they got to PLC, they had no idea how they had done. Like, they hadn't looked at it. This year, they are running to us with little sticky notes. I met my goal, I'm so, and they're so excited about it. And so, it's, we feel like we're changing a little bit of their mindset that they're now excited to see their data, and they want to see it, and they want to see that they met their goal. And it's really exciting to see. And we're seeing it with students, too. I got called to a classroom a few weeks ago because on the CFA, they didn't do so well. And, but they had grown by fifty percent by the time they took the test, and they wanted me to see the results. And the students were excited, and they know that they grew, and they know that they did better. And so, it's just changing that kind of almost mindset or culture in the school that this is important, and we're excited, and we're excited about that our hard work is paying off. So, I just wanted to point that part out. We have some math data as well, and I'll let Ms. Fissler. Ms. Fissler works with our math. well, and I'll let Ms. Fissler. Ms. Fissler works with our math team as a former math instructional coach, so we're kind of, it's a great blessing to have her. So I'll let her talk a little bit about the math data.
So in the math data, at the very top, we have the yellow, that's our goal. And just as Ms. Branch said, it was an aggressive goal, it was a scary goal at the beginning of the year. But what's happening is as teachers are meeting their individual goals, they're meeting their team goals, they're becoming more encouraged and more inspired, and they're setting more challenging goals just for themselves. They're reaching beyond that, what we had discussed as a campus, and they're trying to go beyond that as well, because they're seeing success as well. They're seeing success in their students, and they're seeing success in their data. They're coming into PLCs, and they're modeling. So they'll come up and they'll show a problem on the board, and the other teachers will be almost like students, watching and giving feedback. And then the next person will go up, and they'll do a practice problem. And they're constantly giving feedback to each other, and encouragement and support, whenever, whenever their students are meeting their goal, or whenever that they're seeing that they've reached a really challenging point, and they haven't met their goal yet, their team is there to help support them through that, to give ideas and suggestions. And that's just become a common theme, not just in math, but in all of our PLCs as well, is that we're seeing growth, and we're supporting each other through this process.
Ms. Pink is going to talk a little bit about our science data.
So when I first came on, I realized, looking at our last year's star scores, that I had quite a lot of work to do. And my focus with my science teams has been on alignment. We've had some alignment issues. They, one of the procedures that we do with our PLC is they model their lessons, their activities. And I found out pretty quickly that a lot of the things that they have been doing in the past were not aligned to the standard, the state standards. And by questioning them and referring to the standard over and over again, they finally had their aha moments of, like, we've been teaching the wrong things. And so if you see our data, it took us a little bit to get there, but when you look at it, we are getting some green in 5th grade. That Unit 2, CFA 2, at that 48%, was on a particularly hard standard. We were able to target that standard in our Hornet time, and by the time we got to the Unit 2 test, we grew 10 percentage points. So they were very excited about that, and they are seeing that the work they are doing in Hornet time is paying off. And they see, and the Data Digs are helping them to make connections and to, to see and target our students for growth and for interventions. So they're working really hard, and I'm very proud of them. Something that we have now, that they did not have in the past, is we've got STEM Scopes now, which is a curriculum program that is very tightly aligned to the state standards. So that is, that is very beneficial to them, and both 5th and 6th grade are doing really well with that. So their hard work is, is paying off. I'm very proud of them. I'm very fortunate to be a part of their team. I love my, my science teachers, they're wonderful. And it's exciting to see them excited about their growth.
Okay. So one other piece of our, of what we do in terms of tracking data is we also track by individual students. So this is an example of a teacher data tracker. And you'll notice that, you know, we didn't put the student's name on there, but this is a real student. So you'll can see the student was not very successful. They failed all three of their star tests in 5th grade. The color coding on this one's a little bit different. So if you see green, that means that student reached masters on that particular CFA or unit test. If you see yellow, they were at the meets level. The orange, I know it's a little hard to see the orange and the red, but the orange is approaches. And then, of course, the red is, they're still below that approaches. So you can see that here's a student who was not successful on any of their star tests last year, but they're showing growth, they're showing success, and getting to that meets and masters level. And that Hornet time is their mastery check for Hornet time. So after they've been in that intervention for two weeks, you can see that they're actually showing improvement based on that Hornet time instruction. So this is another, we have data meetings once a month with our teachers, where we go through these data trackers with them, and we're specifically looking at those students who were not successful last year on their star test, because we want to make sure they grow. Because our goal is everyone's going to grow this year. And we're going to grow all of our students and help them to be successful. So in addition to everything else we talked about, we do also have some pullouts with reading and math intervention. Dr. Murray mentioned about, you know, getting our students to grade level in terms of reading. We have some students who are very behind, some of them were behind before last year, but last year didn't help, right? If they were virtual, and their grade levels, their reading levels really slipped. So we have a reading intervention program, we have 139 students in that, that we're working to get their, get them back onto a grade level for their reading. And then we also have math intervention. We have about 53 students in math intervention. And in that intervention, we're looking at foundation skills, and making sure we're building those foundational skills that are so important to everything that we teach in math for the year. So last, we just, we put this at the end of our presentation, we presented, it was a quote, I think we stole from Mr. Forney. But it, it just goes back to what I said in the beginning, which again is that growth is not by chance. You know, excellence isn't an accident. It just really spoke to what we're doing, that we've been very intentional with our plan. I hope that you can see that through what we presented today. I know it's just a snippet of our whole presentation, but we, we put a plan in place, and we're working that plan, and we're seeing results from it. So we're really very excited and optimistic about how we're going to continue to do that throughout the rest of this year. So thank you all for listening. We appreciate it. Again, we didn't have a fancy video, but thank you for, for hearing us out, so.
There you go.
I don't want to go out, so I don't want to turn this on. It's very apparent to me that you're not only growing students, but you're growing educators. And I'm hearing it from your teachers, so I don't know if that makes a difference or not. But I know that you're spending time growing each one of the teachers, and I just want to say thank you very, very much.
Yes, I, I echo that. That was such an impressive presentation from all of you. So thank you for your work, thank you for your leadership, and just looking at how you can identify and help each student that's struggling. Thank you so much. I got goosebumps from that, so thank you. We like this stadium, too, but this is better.
Okay, moving on, we're on to the monthly digital report.
Mr. Leahy was not able to be with us today, but he did ask me to let you all know how grateful he was to have the opportunity to share Amber Bryant's Huntsville ISD story. Amber's a life skills teacher at Huntsville High School, and when she shares her story, you'll find that she also shares the stories of our students and the importance of inclusion in education.
I have some nephews that have some special needs. I also have some cousins that have special needs. So I've been around it for a very long time. I've always been one to help people who needed me, or needed more help. I don't know, I just, I've always wanted to help people and serve in some way. When I was in high school, I got paired with another student who had special needs in art class. The art teacher had asked me, you know, help her when you can. She might struggle a little bit, and she'll ask you for help. And if you can, just kind of help her, and I'll help, too. And I did, and I formed a really good relationship with her. I think that was my first hands-on experience with someone with special needs that wasn't in my family. So I went to talk to a career counselor, and she had asked me a bunch of questions. This student, Allison, had come up, and the career counselor started probing me more about that. The more I came to think about it, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to do. I wanted to help people with special needs do more. And that's kind of what I was doing in art class with her, and I didn't even know it. I teach 9 through 12 life skills students.
13 flowers and 10 leaves.
I love my job, and I have a really great team. They're teenagers. They have teenager emotions and feelings, and they want to experience the same things that teenagers do, and they're students, and they, they want to be a part of the school and do what the school is doing. Inclusion is important for those with special needs to have that opportunity to interact with other people and build relationships. It's the impact the other way around. You, you gain more awareness, and you realize that there is a wide range of special needs, and that can look different, but the impact is still the same. They shouldn't be underestimated. They have the same, they go through the same things that everybody else does, and I think I, I didn't realize that, or I forgot that. Just coming from my own family, you know, sometimes I didn't quite understand the emotions, and I always thought that had to do with the disability. And it wasn't always that way. It was, like, all people go through that. The Hornet Buddies is a mentorship club, students without disabilities mentor students with disabilities. So Special Olympics has a program, it's called Unified Sports. Students with disabilities and without disabilities get to compete together. And I have started a unified basketball team. I'm so excited about it. We have a great group of boys coming together. They just love to play. It's, it is a group of boys that just love to play basketball. Their first practice, seeing the boys come together, like, the boys just took over, and they were coaching, just sat back, and I loved that. I love, I love how supportive Huntsville community has been, not just of me, but the buddies and our department. I, I think the biggest thing is they do get underestimated, and I, I'm guilty of it myself. And I always get surprised, and then I'm like, stop. Because what they're capable of is, it matters. And I want them to know that, and I want everybody else to know that. My name is Amber Bryant, and this is my Huntsville ISD story.
For those of you who don't know, Amber actually is with us tonight, right here. And her, and her husband, who is by her side all the time, is back there in the back, Jared.
Trooper.
And you, too.
And I know she heard Ashley DeMiche, Director of Special Education, is right next to her, too, so.
I have to say, Amber teaches my son. Her and the special ed staff are absolutely a blessing, and there is so much that they do that nobody even knows. So to see just this little piece of, of their day, and just the love that they share with these kids, but bigger than that, is they have expectations of these kids, just like a teacher that teaches pre-AP or AP or on-ramps has of their kids. And it's people like Amber and, and the people in special ed that get my son and their friends to places that they remember me. So I'm really glad Matthew shared that, and thank you both. And you, too, Jared, because I get to always be present.
Thank you again, and we could not even come up with the same, and as well, you did. Next time, only agenda is the board of trustees' comments. Do we have any comments?
This was the best board meeting that I've ever been to.
No one can top that, so. Next time, only agenda superintendent briefing, Dr. Kevin.
I'll try not to ruin the best board meeting, Mary.
Yeah, keep it short.
Very short.
He's done.
Yeah. You know, we, we have a lot to celebrate. We, we know that our sports teams are working hard, our cross-country football is still fighting for a playoff spot, our sub varicities are having a great season. Volleyball has clinched a playoff spot. I got the privilege of going to see our marching band at UIO last Tuesday, I guess it was. Is that right, Mr. Roberts? I think that's right. We went down together to see them performing, made straight ones again, did a great job, represented us so well, and then went and qualified to go compete yesterday at the Longview at the UIO State Military Marching Band Competition, and represented us very well, too. So, you know, there literally is something for every student, as you've seen tonight, every student of every type in Huntsville ISD. There's many, many reasons to choose Huntsville ISD for your child's education. I can't say enough, I don't have it written down to say anything about the report from HIS tonight, but I just have to just say again how impressive that is. It is, that is work that you don't see in a lot of districts, on a lot of campuses, that, I mean, I'm just going to say, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be open and real. There are a lot of A-rated campuses and A-rated districts that are not doing that quality. And, and for, for our staff to work that hard every single day to serve our kids is such a testament to, to our staff, and to our campus administration, and our support team at, in this building and in other buildings that help them do that work. It's incredible. I want to close with a kind of anecdotal thing. You know, we, like any school, we get an email if something goes wrong. It's always nice to get an email when something goes right. This is an anecdotal little letter that was sent to Ms. Barnes, our principal at Scott Johnson. It says, "Good evening, Ms. Barnes. Today I had the pleasure of giving all 3rd graders at Scott Johnson Elementary a tour of the Huntsville Public Library, and I just had to share with you how impressed I was by their management. Each and every class was so polite, respectful, and very, very smart. They listened with eager ears during the tour, asked very thoughtful questions about how a library operates, and shared anecdotes of their own experiences in libraries. Those who wanted, wanted help finding books were exceptionally patient with me as I assisted them and their classmates, but they all settled in quietly to read a few pages, which they were all very serious about. The 3rd grade teachers of Scott Johnson Elementary are doing a phenomenal job in their classrooms. Thank you, thank you for all that you and your educators do at Scott Johnson Elementary, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give them a tour." And that was from the children's coordinator, Ms. Prentzer, at our public library. It's awesome to get those kinds of letters, as a school district. And thanks to the staff at Scott Johnson for that, and for the kids, too. And that is my report.
And so next time, we have, check the calendars, trust these, our next meeting's scheduled for Thursday, November 18th, at 5:00 PM.
I will be out of town.
I will be here.
Turkey Day is a week from now. Okay, we're down to five. So.
Would you need to go into a session for our monthly child report only, or is there no action coming out of the call session?
Okay, so the time is 8:09, we're going into a close session, but there will be no decision coming out.